Please, the block, right go ahead and I'll figure this out. Be to order, please rise and join us in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Now since Terry is, this is his district, we're gonna hand it over to him at this point.
You, Mr. Chairman, I would like to welcome everybody to county council. There's a lot of citizens here, so you can see how county government works, very interesting. One of these days, I would like to invite some middle school children to run committees under our government, but I don't know if that ever happened. I would like to give the optional prayer of recitation. Help others and give something back. I guarantee you, you will discover that a well public service improves the lives and the world around you. Its greatest reward is the enrichment of new meaning in your own life. And that was a quote by Ernest Swartz in America. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vale?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Sharron?
Here.
Mr. Scatella?
Here.
Mr. Winarski?
Here.
And Chairman Sheik.
Here.
Now, this is my favorite time of the evening where we actually hand the microphone over to the citizens so that they can say a few words. We didn't have anybody call ahead of time for five minutes, so at this time, if you'd like to say a few words, please just give us your name, your municipality, and the microphone over here to my right is on for you. So if there's anybody who'd like to say a few words, please take it over at this time.
Good evening, council, administration, taxpayers, residents. Lou Aliotta, Lou Kuktenja. Over the past two years, I've been looking at certain public entities, and one of those entities is the Erie Regional Airport Authority. And I presume that everyone on mailing list, the email list, has received a copy both in the county and in the city, and also in the administration. Relative to certain issues that I brought up, questions, inquiries, and they're just not answered. And I'm wondering about that. My latest was 8:15, which was yesterday. The topic is Erie Regional Airport Authority, Issues and Liabilities, Continuation, and the fourth follow-up of what I've been documenting. And wondering, as public officials, according to the latest email, actually, it's a memo from the county executive. He delineates in his subject matter is ethics policy review for authorities, boards, commissions, and other organizations of Erie County Government. And the topics are accountability, conflict of interest, anti-nepotism and nepotism. And the last one is, if I may say, only a transparency. What I believe is happening is that there is really an enabligation of duty. You've taken an oath of office, and other public officials taking oath of office. You're well aware of the petition to remove school board directors in Mill Creek and Northeast because they violated their oath of office. And it's being heard by Judge Merucci at the present time. I bring to your attention, and I'll probably send this to the county and city council, legal ethics advising a politically charged or split board. And it describes all the issues relative to solicitors, board directors, board trustees, and what the level of trustworthiness that's when you have a politically charged environment at the present time. I'm looking at my, yes, it's right.
Sir, I need to do this, three minutes just flies when you're having fun.
You know what, I have to.
Thank you.
I really do have to ask for five minutes. And I also have to.
Just call in or email ahead of time, the line in the office could take care of it.
It's just a little minor circle.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Anybody else would like to say a few words at this time? Anybody else would like to say a few words at this time? Anybody would like to say a few words at this time? Seeing none, we're gonna move on. I'll accept the motion for the minutes of the previous meetings to be approved.
So.
Seven.
First one, Mr. Scatella, second one, Ms. Rennie, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
Is there any reports by the county executive or his designate?
Not today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll move on to finance committee, Ms. Sharron, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. The finance committee met on Thursday, August 11th and submitted to the agenda in new business items A through H and M through U. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to personnel committee. Mr. Scatella, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. The personnel committee met on Thursday, August 11th and submitted to the agenda of old business A, new business I, L, and D, and AA.
Thank you, sir. Any other reports at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a report this evening. Thank you. In my capacity as Chair of the Election Board, I just wanted to make mention of a couple of things this evening. One is an ordinance on the agenda ratifying Erie County Board of Elections Resolution Number 7, ordinance number 103, so I just wanted to call your attention to that. This is Act 88 amending the election code. And there's already been some spinning, I think, from politicians around the state on this. But Act 88 amends the election code to provide an election integrity grant program administered by the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED. The program will provide funding intended to secure the integrity of the election. Erie County stands to receive $911,743 for 2022 funding. Act 88 also stipulates other things, such as it amends the election code to prohibit counties from soliciting, applying for, or receiving grants, gifts, funds, or donations from individuals, businesses, organizations, nonprofits, or any other non-governmental entity for voter registration or for the preparation, administration, or conduct of elections. Now, I just want to make mention of the fact that Act 77 had deep consequences, obviously, changed everything, coming as it did right before COVID hit. But although Act 77 mandated many things, it did not give assistance with the how of the election process, nor with the cost. And 2020 was a very expensive election process. It was the most expensive in Erie County history, with costs around $1 million. Erie County did obtain a tech grant in that year in the amount of around $148,000, which did assist us with personnel costs and equipment costs. It did comply with election law at that time. And we did have to comply strictly with government accounting standards for that. So it was clearly within the law. I fully stand behind the process for 2020. We worked hard during that process. We have a small army of people who worked throughout the county with the election process, beginning with our Office of Elections and Voter Registration. Really, the people that you see up here as well all participate on Board of Elections, and then all of the poll workers and other people who work throughout each of the precincts. So you're looking at about 800 people. It's a process for which I'm very proud. However, I will say that this particular act will provide some very welcome assistance. The funding will allow us to seek additional technology, which should speed the process along. And it's probably one of the first that I can remember. We get quite a few mandates from the state, and it's been a common complaint from our predecessors on county council that the state issues a number of unfunded mandates. In this case, it's a mandate that is funded, and as I said, it will be very welcome, the assistance that it provides the county. And although I feel that it was always done with integrity, this will provide a level, I think, of effectiveness that we didn't have previously. So I do welcome this very much. Second thing that I wanted to report on today is Help America Vote Day, proclaimed by Acting Secretary of the Commonwealth, Lee Chapman, and who is encouraging eligible Pennsylvanians to serve as poll workers for the general election. And in the spirit of that, people from our office are reaching out, and will continue to reach out, to ask people to consider signing up to become a poll worker for Election Day. So I just wanted to make mention of that and to encourage people that if you have interest, please give us a call. And you can get more information. We will be doing more community outreach. I'm not going to go into, do you think I need to go into the, okay. I'm not going to go into the particulars here, but we are most definitely looking for help with people working with polls for the general election. So I encourage people to look into that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, for that great report, appreciate that. And this takes us to number seven, old business, title only, please.
Second reading, ordinance number 95, 2022, 36, 2022, general fund budget supplemental appropriation of $37,101 for the creation of GIS manager position in Director Administration Bureau.
So moved. Seven.
I have the first one, Ms. Sharron, second one, Ms. Rennie. Any discussion? Singing, no call vote, please.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to number eight, new business. I'm just a friend to remind you, because we just first reads, so that's the title only, please.
First reading of ordinance number 97 of 2022, second, 2022 capital projects fund budget supplemental appropriation of $235,000, I'm sorry, $235,514,000 to move the location of the match for the Keystone brand for Glasgow Library renovations to the capital project budget.
So moved.
This is a first read.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, sir. First read, we just talk about it, the next time we call phone number. So take us down to beat number 98, title only.
First reading of ordinance number 98 of 2022, the ninth, 2022, library fund budget supplemental appropriation of $235,514,000 to move the location of the match for the Keystone brand with Glasgow Library renovations to the capital project budget.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move that we amend new business, I guess that's what I had, but we'll do it. If we amend new business to move items D, E, F, G, H, J, K, and L to a second read. And I know we do still have to do items C. As a first.
Okay. We have a motion, I need a first and a second.
On second.
Thank you, first and a second. Any discussion on those? Now, we're just amending to make them a second read. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
That's okay. We'll just go back up to C. Just jump us back up to C, number 99. It's a first read, title only.
First reading of ordinance number 99 of 2022, 38, 2022, general fund budget supplemental appropriation of $117,777,000 to move the location of the match for the Keystone brand with Glasgow Library renovations to the capital project budget.
Okay, this takes us down to D, and this is a second read on number 10, title only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 100 of 2022, 39, 2022, general fund budget supplemental appropriation of $100,000 in creation of the bureau and budget lines for the fiscal year 2021, 2024, Operation Stone Garden Grant.
Oh, oh, second.
I have first one, Mr. Horton, second one, Mr. Vale. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to B, ordinance number 101, title only. This is a second read.
Second reading of ordinance number 101 of 2022, 40th, 2022, general fund budget supplemental appropriation of $63,018, and the creation of budget lines for the AOP Security Grant in the course, MEJ Bureau.
So moved.
Second.
I have the first one, Mr. Horton, second one, Ms. Rennie. Any discussion at this point? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to F, number 102, title only. This is a second read.
Second reading of adoption of the local tax collection law as of Act of July 11, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
I have the first one, Ms. Sharron, second one, Mr. Winarski. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please, sir.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This is G, ordinance number 103. This is a second read, title only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 103 of 2022, ratifying Erie County Board of Elections Resolution 7, 2022.
So moved. Second.
I have the first one, Ms. Rennie, second one, Ms. Sharron. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to H, number 104, title, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 104 of 2022, approving a sales proposal for services to be rendered by Opex Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
I have the first one, Mr. Winarski, second one, Ms. Rennie. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to I, just a friend to remind you, this is a first read only, title only.
First reading of ordinance number 105, 2022, 2022, public health fund budget revised expenditures of $14,932, the elimination of the epidemiological research assistant position and creation of public health preparedness coordinator position.
This takes us to J. This is a second read and title only.
J is a second read or a first read?
In order to.
We do apologize for not informing you that it's a second read, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's a second reading again, that's perfect. Second reading of ordinance number 106, 2022, 2022, general fund budget revised expenditures of $2,756 for job reclassification in the general accounting office.
So moved. Second.
I have the first one, Ms. Rennie, second one, Ms. Sharron. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to K, number 107, title only, please. This is a second read.
Second reading of ordinance number 107 of 2022, 41st, 2022, general fund budget supplemental appropriation of $3,277 for elimination of risk coordinator position and creation of senior HR generalist risk management position in human resources.
So, so moved.
I have the first one, Ms. Rennie, second one, Ms. Scatella. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to L, number 108. This is a second read and title only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 108 of 2022, 2022, Office of Children and Youth Fund Budget Revised expenditures of $2,824 for the Edmund L. Thomas Detention Center Administrative Assistant I and II Pay Increases.
So moved.
Second.
I couldn't tell which one did the name, okay. I have the first one, Ms. Rennie, second one, Mr. Vale. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to M, these are resolutions, number 23, please.
Resolution number 23 of 2022, approval of the redevelopment assistance capital grant application and the cooperation agreement between the General Authority, Impact Cori, and the County of Erie for the Cori Tech Accelerator.
So moved. Second.
I have the first one, Mr. Horton, second one, Mr. Winarski. Any discussion?
I think it was Mr. Vale.
I can't tell from the back. Put a name down, I trust you. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to N, resolution number 24, title only, please.
Resolution number 24, 2022, approval of the redevelopment assistance capital grant application and the cooperation agreement between the General Authority, Impact Cori, and the County of Erie for the Green Junction Park Project.
So moved, second.
See, that was easy, Mrs. Scatella, Mr. Horton, sing. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to O, resolution number 25.
Resolution number 25 of 2022, abatement and exoneration of taxes and fees for Union City Pride Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
I have the first one, Mr. Vale, second one, Ms. Sharron. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's loaded. In the narrative, it says on the second page, it says the other taxing, Martin School Districts and Burrows and Erie County Board of Assessment and Field have a group have approved their taxes and status. And so I don't think anyone has any issue with them, with how they taxing that. But as far as solicitors, after much discussion, we were to separate, ask. I will be voting against this, receiving law for the receiving their taxes and status. But as I stated on Thursday, should a citizen fall behind in his taxes or her taxes or their taxes, they don't really have a meaning, these honorably, this stuff. And so I welcome them receiving the nonprofit status and exempt status going forward in the future. But I have a good conscience, I can vote for this. I think they should pay the taxes of our citizens, these are taxes that they owe prior to receiving their exempt status. Thank you, Mr. Vale.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just think that it should be for the work of the county council is the only one that can exonerate the other ones to give them their, you know, grant of tax exempt status. Also, that these taxes weren't incurred prior to the purchase by Union City Pride.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to P, resolution number 26, title only, please.
Resolution number 26 of 2022, County of Erie Fair Housing Resolution.
So moved.
Second.
I have the first one, Ms. Sharron, second one, Mr. Horton. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to Q, resolution number 27.
Resolution number 27 of 2022, approving agreements between 13 county school districts, the Dry County Intermediate Union, and the Erie County Department of Health.
So moved.
Second.
I have the first one, Ms. Sharron, second one, Mr. Scatella. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharron?
Yes.
And Chairman Sheik.
Yes.
This takes us to R, resolution number 28, title only, please.
Resolution number 28 of 2022, sole vendor contract between Anna University and Erie County for the conduct of viral ser- I'm sorry, sequencing to improve regional response through identification of COVID-19 variants.
So moved. Second.
I have the first one, Ms. Sharron, second one, Ms. Rennie. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Vale?
Yes.[1790.56]
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Scharrman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
And Chairman Shink.
Yes.
This takes us to S, resolution number twenty-nine, title only, please.
Resolution number twenty-nine of two thousand twenty-two, approving sole vendor contract between Erie County and Infinity Resources Incorporated.
So moved.
Second. I have a first by Mrs. Scharrman, a second by Mr. I believe Winarski. Was that you? Okay. Any discussion, Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is not a discussion, this may be a discussion.
Can you speak up? Can't hear.
I know, I do that on purpose.
You're kind of ill over there now.
I figured the chances of me saying something inappropriate on a hot mic for a listener. I, I know they've already done some work, and so I know some have to exceed seven-five thousand. It's there, I figure, didn't tell this, you would know how much they've already spent. Probably spent an initial twenty thousand. I think that would be relevant, relevant.
Roughly twenty-nine thousand? Nineteen and another... Nineteen and almost another one.
Okay. So it's like thirty, so they've almost had, or exceeded half. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have a few words on this one?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
As I said during caucus, I, I will be voting in favor of this because I, I think it is the lesser of two wheels. We do need this process moving. It is a tough bargaining year for contracts and so forth. It's a tough year, generally speaking. It's a new administration, so they have a lot to deal with coming in, coming into a year where they're going to have to do contracts. And then, of course, the HR director position was vacant until just about March, I think. So it's understandable, I think, that we could get to this point. Ideally, something like this should be bid, and in the interests of the citizens. I think it should be bid. However, it is getting late in the year. We are aware that Infinity Resources has been used by different departments in the county, and I think they will do a fine job of representing the county. So I will be voting in favor of this. Again, just qualifications. I wish we didn't have to do it this way, but pragmatically speaking, I think this is the right vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Vale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Scharrman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
And Chairman Shink.
Yes.
This takes us to U, resolution number thirty-one.
T.
You were trying to say you and I appreciate.
Yeah, sorry. One little line, and I was like, two. Resolution number thirty, that's T, title only, please.
Resolution number thirty of two thousand twenty-two, supporting the Pennsylvania Commission, the United States Semi Quincentennial.
You can send it right. Thank you.
Any...
Second.
I got a first and a second, Mr. Horton, Mr. Winarski. Any discussion? Sing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Scharrman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Vale.
Yes.
And Chairman Shink.
Yes.
Now, can I do you?
Yes, sir.
Resolution number thirty-one.
Resolution, resolution number thirty-one of two thousand twenty-two, approving the twenty-five-year extension to the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority, EMTA charter.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Horton, a second by Ms. Rennie. Any discussion? Sing none, I'll say a few words and make it quick. This is, this is a good thing for Erie County. We have to make sure that folks that can't afford to buy a car have a way to get around town. And if you've ever been downtown and see the new EMTA facility and where they're going with this, it's, it's very impressive, and they've done a lot of work. And those are our tax dollars. And trust me, we are very, very careful, and we make sure that they're spending our tax dollars very, very carefully. But it's an investment. And all they're asking is a twenty-five-year extension. They have done an amazing job in the last ten, fifteen years. Just take a drive down there and just look at this nice facility, clean. They were discussing with us the other day about electric buses. They're, they're right at that point where they're ready to get two of them. So I think this is a win-win-win for everybody, and they have some big plans on the horizon that I really can't discuss because they want to make it official. So roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Scharrman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Vale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
And Chairman Shink.
Yes.
This takes us to V, resolution number thirty-two, title only.
Resolution number thirty-two of two thousand twenty-two, approval of job description and ordinance for deputy solicitor.
So moved.
I think I have Mr. Vale and Mr. Scatella on that one. Any discussion? Sing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Scharrman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Vale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
And Chairman Shink.
Yes.
This is the fun part. I get to get people to go to work for free. It's nice. W, just a title only, please.
Possible appointment of Robert W. Merrill to the Erie County Community College Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Second. I have a first by Mrs. Scharrman and a second by Mrs. Scatella. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Vale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Scharrman.
Yes.
And Chairman Shink.
Yes.
This takes us to X.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move to amend this item to waive the administrative code, specifically the district residence requirement.
Did we actually have that as an issue?
Yeah, we needed to...
Okay. Just want to make sure.
After speaking with our solicitor, what are you doing?
All right, I have a first, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski. So we're going to be voting on the amendment to waive the residency first.
Yes.
Are we clear on that? Any discussion? Sing none, roll call vote on the amendment.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Vale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
No.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Scharrman.
Yes.